There we go.
Okay.
Hey. Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everybody to the Library Board of Trustees February 28th meeting. I'm Dani Eblin, who are board chair, and I will call this meeting to order at 12:07. Just a few things as the board chair, I'm going to create a productive meeting place where every trustee and staff member are respected, valued, seen, and heard. We will take public comment before our discussion so that we can take your public comments into consideration before our own comments, giving us a more informed direction and decision, discussion, excuse me. Um, a reminder that all public comments will be limited to three minutes. We're going to go into an executive session now with Tracy Cook, and we will come out in about forty-five minutes or so. After that, we will continue our meeting according to the agenda. Thanks for your patience. Under 3:30, can you explain to me again? River Press, is that the 3:15 to 8:00? Is that for the week or is that a month?
Okay, so it's a monthly.
Mm-hmm.
Two separate months that just got put in.
Some have, some months have five weeks.
Right, okay.
Or weeks. For the rest of these, can you ask?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And thank you for supporting. Welcome. All right. Any other questions?
Most of them was good.
Okay. I would like to entertain a mo- um, motion to approve the January budget as is.
I know that we approved the January budget as is.
Can I have a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say no. Motion is carried. Vote. Oh, yeah, let's go back to the project cards. That's approved, but um, we want to talk about Neil real quick.
Oh.
Um, we sent, to get him paid, we sent it to, I screwed up and didn't clarify where we were gonna pay those funds out of.
I think we all screwed up.
So that was my mistake. When I, when I asked her a motion, I didn't clarify.
I agree.
So we sent it to um, Tanya to take out of the Tordic money, but I think that we should send that to foundation and make sure that they're all okay with that.
Okay.
If you can get paid.
Yes.
But if we need to move things around, if the foundation decides to move things around.
How do, how do we, how do we pay him out of the foundation or is that?
One of the things is with the Liverclaw Water Foundation is that it specifies no salaries are paid from, they will not allow, like Phil donate to the swim pool or they donate to the.
They want the one million.
But they, yeah, so with foundations, they usually don't pay salaries.
Right, but this is the bill for the payment.
Yeah.
Which is me, so which is a salary.
It's a salary?
Well, it would be his salary.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's a little kind of, what would you call it, a glitch with the foundation.
Part of the money is not like that though.
But part of the money.
And that's what, I mean, and we can discuss that foundation if we want to move funds around.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, all right, because he has.
More bills?
Yeah.
But are those?
This is for the bookshelves.
So that's all.
All the bookshelves are put on that, right.
This is for labor or the bookcases.
That's so the one.
The my hood donation is separate though too.
So we can take it out of there? Okay. Well, how do we?
I mean, it's a foundation. But like theirs, it's not a grant. It was a donation.
Oh, didn't we already approve all of that?
So you would just turn that in and then to Emily, and Emily's gonna take it over to Tanya.
And take it out of the my hood.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Right.
Right, okay.
That's how I'm understanding.
Goodness, and there'll be two.
Yeah.
Yes, he has one bookcase almost done, and we didn't know if you wanted to wait and pay him in one check, two check, and then he said he has to go work for some other people for a little while and then.
Which was the last one. Yep, which is perfect. You just turn those into Emily's there.
Okay.
Thank you. The painting went just ended up being.
You just hit a little foundation and say, we are approving, you know, and then everybody just sent the email back. It's, it depends upon meetings or.
Right, but I believe we are devoted on.
Yeah.
You're doing?
Okay.
All right.
And gonna email it to you.
Yeah.
We don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. I had it right.
All right, branch reports. Are you ready? Um, Big Sandy Themes for January. Reminder that this is for January, not February, even though we're at the end of the month. Martin Luther King Jr. and Mental Health. The projects included Neil painting, but painting happened in January. There's been other things since then, but this is for January. Um, and there were no needs or concerns expressed to me. Fort Benton Themes, best of 2023, um, according to, I believe, the New York Times list. Time Travel, first word, first in series. Books made into movies, retelling plus the original were paired together in the displays. Juvenile Historical Fiction. Fables Illustrated Retellings, Stephen Kellogg. Mystery and Learn a New Craft Hobby and or Skill. Projects, I went to the Golden Age Center to their monthly dinner to talk about services, and then I have started a a book exchange there, so I just take what's in the basement and take it over, and I decided every the day, the morning of their evening dinner, I will take new books and switch them out, which we've, now a lot of people come in, they've read something that they got there and have come. So look, bring your books.
Great.
Bring them. Yeah, um, Mary did another collection development presentation that was Zoomed. Um, we had a Friends of the Library, Friends of the Fort Benton Library Potluck and Planning Session, and we had our first of 2024 Staff Training in Fort Benton. Geraldine Themes, award-winning bestselling books. She didn't have any projects out this time, or needs or concerns, and no change, and I won.
Except we did send them a copy of the.
Right, yeah, I wasn't sure if that was prepared. So there is movement on that, um, but nothing really to report about.
Nope.
Still in the planning stages. Committee, committee work.
We need blankets.
Um. While we're looking at circulation, I have a couple of good vibes. Um, to Emily on finishing her Montana State Library Certification, woo-hoo! With a completed of ninety hours of continuing education since 2021, thirty more credits than required for the Director's Certification. Um, and then also Sammy Jo for working with the school to launch the democracy program for teens. Um, that's exciting. It's, um, she's just in launching stages, but she seems really excited about it. Talking to her about it, uh, it's really cool. Um, and then from a patron point of view, um, for Sammy Jo, for always thinking of my kiddos and what books they might like. So when I go in there, then like, I don't know what to get. She's like, this one, I thought of Delaney. Read this one. It's just, it's been really good. Very good.
I think we've got some books going. They're really cool. Uh, the painting's beautiful. How's that?
I love it.
The bookshelf, she, the bookshelf that was finished for the Montana Room, and they put the mountaineers.
Yeah.
Up the correct way, so you know, books were supposed to, yeah. And she has the extra.
Close to that.
Yeah, yes. She's been cleaning and rearranging.
What color did they paint?
It's a, it's a dark, uh, well.
Paint the walls.
That color, those walls.
Oh, they just took a cream.
A pink.
Yeah.
It looks clean and nice.
Good.
Yeah.
So, and also kudos to um, to Neil, because he was very concerned about the prices. So I just happened to be going in there. I had gone up to have her for a meeting and I stopped in, and then he was talking, so because to save money, he did what things needed to be oak next to things that needed to be oak, but if the wood was brown or been painted, he built them accordingly.
He did, he did exactly that.
He did do that, so that there wasn't, because the expense of doing just oak for some of that would have been huge, and he was very concerned about the fact that he didn't want to spend any more than he had to want to.
All right. The church report. So, um, Sammy Jo did have the first two humanities Montana, um, art of meaningful conversations with Lowell Jaeger was successful. I think there were eleven people in person, people from Geraldine and Fort Benton. Um, and then Zoom only option with Candy Zion, which was oral histories, and I was able to zoom in for part of that, and there was, we had somebody here came to be able to zoom in. Um, and I think Dani and I have talked about it a little bit, uh, it's, oral histories is a continued, like, that's one of the things that people who come in and ask for programming, ask about that. And so it's great. We've made this connection with Candy now, and I mean, for Geraldine, it was, there were a few people in person that went there to Zoom and, um, really a starting point. So now it has gone from like, I wouldn't agree if we had some oral histories to we should talk about the airport, we should talk to the folks who are on state level, state winning teams, like, they got more of a focus, so now there's Timbaliford, or they talked about equipment, they talked about some different things, um, and she's trying to get the teens incorporated into that too. Um, her owl did get there in time for that meeting, and she is great with technology, and so she's able to put it up on a bigger screen, so the people that were there were able to watch and interact with Candy. Um, so that, she gives, she's keeping some great stuff with that. Um, the front desk upstairs, we got a piece of glass cut and it came in, and so I'm very excited about that. Um, I got an email about we need to have a disaster preparedness plan, so I've reached out to Deb Gessman, because I haven't been able to find it here, and she also could not find it. So we are gonna work together to make sure, because she remembers doing it with Andrew, so it's gotta be somewhere, so that just came in last week. So we will be working on that. Um, everyone reads, so as part of our, as part of the Fort Benton Community Conversations Program, the book I picked for April is, um, Talking to Strangers, What We Should Know About the People We Don't Know by Malcolm Gladwell. Uh, I invite everyone, I invite all the trustees to read that also. We have copies available. I have scheduled four different sessions, which Zoom can also be part of that, so. Um, three of them are in April, one of them is on May 1st, so it's different days of the week, it's different times, two are at noon, two are at 5:30, trying to reach as many people.
Are you discussing the same?
You're saying the same.
Yep.
Yep, so it's not like a four?
No, you don't have to come to all of them. You just pick one, you just pick one.
You just pick one. Unless you want to come to more of them.
And it'll be Zoomed too?
Mm-hmm, yep.
But you have the books to be.
Yeah, they're upstairs. There is a copy available in ebook format through Libby and audio.
Audio through Libby.
And we have a large print version, and then we have ordered the CD version, so we have ten that we've got a book kit with the, with the grant that we got. We got a kit of ten. We already have the large print, and Sammy Jo has one. Already had one in Geraldine too, which was part of the reason I picked it, was because we can be able to do that. Um, the staff will be working on a community, we are working on a community survey that we will launch in June and will run all summer. Um, if you have any specific questions in mind, Dani's already has brought some to me, um, just let me know. Let me know what you want to know, if you have, I think we're gonna do a hybrid specific survey too, but also we could include that on this, so anything you would like to see, and I will bring that to the board before it is published.
Thank you.
Um, and then budget. I will be bringing those initial budget numbers to the March meeting, which gives us, like, you can, you will take them, we probably won't talk about it a whole lot, I don't think, at the March meeting, but it will give you all of April to look at that, bring it back, we'll talk about it in April.
Okay.
We can make adjustments, we can bring it back in May, hopefully get it to approval in May, but if not, we still have usually two full weeks after the meeting. We had to have that special meeting last year, so.
By June, is that when it's?
It's usually like June 10th or something, so, um, but that's my timeline. Um, if you, as you look at your budget numbers that you have, um.
Yeah.
The sheet, that is. It's like this, it's probably the third page, I think, that has the Fort Benton, the examining, and then Geraldine, so if you please take a look at that, and if you see anywhere where you think an adjustment needs to be made, um.
Like where they're a hundred percent and some of that, a hundred and fifteen percent, stuff like that?
And that's why.
All right.
Sometimes we try to adjust, like, especially in collection development, um, adjust that money. But Cheryl has expressed to me that we want to keep it as is, we won't make any of those adjustments till the end, so then we know if we need to increase something by X amount.
Okay.
On. Anyway, so that will be coming in March to the March meeting. Not that you can't ask me questions that day, I'm not trying to say that, I'm just trying to give plenty of time for everybody to sit down.
So this would be good to just start with.
So I would take a look at that sheet and say.
This, okay.
We need more in advertising or subscriptions or this or that or whatever, um.
Yeah.
Collections and development, um. So then I also want to talk about, we talked about Dani gave me that wobbly compliment, so. Um, sorry, did I steal your thunder? No, not, but, so, so Sarah Shaw did get her staff track done. Um, Darlene finished her library administration track, and Mary finished her library administration track, and she got her diploma just the other day for her master.
Oh, wow.
So I wanted to make sure, see, that was the thing, like, we're gonna share it.
But yeah.
Absolutely, goodbye. I wanted to share all of that. So. And I often don't necessarily include, oh, I have problems with everyone, by the way. I don't always send that out early because I just never really know what to talk about, and that's usually the very last thing that I put together, so, but. So it's not supposed to be meant as a surprise, it's just. I'm gonna figure what I cover in other parts of the meeting, what needs to be talked about.
If you need help with business, and then I wrote the manual for the, but it was.
Well, I think she said she was gonna try to find what she and Sandra had put together, so we don't have to start.
I do like it.
I know, it's not on the hard drive, so I don't, I'm gonna have to. And that's what she said, because that is someone, so. Um, does anybody have any questions about any of that stuff? Sorry that I gave you the shit again. Great, that's fantastic. Thank you for working on the budget.
Yeah.
Um, big project.
Hang on, I have to work on the budgets.
Um, not a whole lot, there's no federal holidays in March, so there's no.
I know.
I'm sure.
And I don't think that's for me.
And, um, so like, like, looking farther ahead, I just put the National Library Week down. Um, usually each branch does something during that week. I don't have any specific programming yet to report on. Um, besides that we're doing that, everyone reads.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, that's all I have for that.
Awesome.
Thank you, Ellen.
Yep.
All right, then on to unfinished business. Bylaws are the third one. I think that one change we made last time was the bottom of the first page. We cut out a following and changed it to recommend. I mean, it was the only real change that we. Because there was some other stuff we had changed, or what I have to recommend.
Yeah.
Members.
Yeah.
Because the board doesn't.
The commission's open.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
But everything else, I think we had added before. We had added, but that, all of this has now, this is the third reading for it, you know, this one map.
So we're ready to vote?
Yeah.
Will be.
I make, oh, go ahead. I make a motion to approve the bylaws for the Board of Trustees.
Do we have a second?
Awesome.
Did Zoom properly move and seconded? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion is.
What?
No, go ahead. I'm just gonna act. Would you like us to sign this back page while we're here?
Yeah, that's what we need. That was part of what had.
Did we sign it together?
It's better for. Well, we'll just make sure we have one copy that we.
Everybody signs.
Mm-hmm. I might, Janet, let me print a whole fresh one that doesn't have holes or anything.
Doesn't have holes or anything.
Okay.
Before.
That would be for our packet.
Oh, okay, okay. I just like remembered that we want to do that.
That was probably, yes.
You can put it for next, you know, whatever, but.
Well, I could spring it in. All right, on to circulation policies.
I'm wondering what we're trying to show on this.
Anything? This is a second read. Yeah, so the one thing that I don't know if we had talked about under the inner library loan, we're gonna increase that $4.00. That was the main part.
To have it four.
Because it's from three, the new, now I'm, I believe, like, the cheapest way to send it is $4.11, so, like, eating 11 cents isn't too big of a deal, but eating a $1.11 goes out of, so. All right.
Do we want to say?
One second.
We go on.
It's already.
Absolutely.
She just wants to mess to the.
We don't forget it.
That's a good idea.
Send it, send it, full send.
Lie it down.
I'll get it signed.
Okay, so they're, yep, ready. All right, so I would like to entertain a motion for the approvals of the bylaws as presented.
Oh, we already did the bylaws.
Oh, sorry. Circulation policy, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my ass.
There it is. I will just keep up with my. I think that. I'm trying to think that Emily and Dani and who was here. Anyway, did a great job on it, and I would like to recommend that we approve the collection policy.
Circulation.
Circulation, but wasn't that?
We did the collection last month.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, okay, I'll send it.
Circulation policy.
So we're on the same page.
We're on the same page.
Sorry.
Second.
The people water.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Circulation. Aye. All opposed, say no. The note has been approved by voice vote. All right, on to the meeting room policy.
I would like it to go back to the policy committee.
Okay. Anybody else have feelings on that? I'm going with that.
Going back?
Yeah, just going back.
Yep, I agree.
Review it a little bit more.
Yep.
And fine tune it a little bit more.
Okay.
All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion then for sending the meeting room policy back to the policy committee for fine tuning.
I move we send the
Meeting.
Meeting room policy back to the committee to the, to.
Fine tune it. So. Wait, how does that get? It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion has carried, been approved by voice vote. That mediation, which.
We want a copy of that in last.
Last one.
We talked about last time.
So I'm gonna do it.
Yeah. Please. Oh, yeah.
All right. Let's talk.
This is hard. This is a tough thing, big thing, but we need to do a vote. Yeah, I say, uh, for the sake of everyone, the cat goes to a new home or something. And I love cats. I have four of them, and I'm allergic to cats, so. I mean, that's, that's my vote.
Over signing the, um.
Do we have to fill out?
The mediation.
Well, you talked last time that if they, if the mediation went deeper, they might.
Well, we can sign the mediation, and then it doesn't go to any full investigation, but we sign the mediation and agree to all the terms on the mediation, it won't go to investigation.
And that's what you were talking about, that would not be real.
I. I, I don't think it's a wise decision to go to full investigation, myself. I would agree.
And I think we need to, um, to do this with, um, a policy. That we prohibit all animals except if they're service animal. And then with the limitation of the E S A's. And then.
And that's, it's in the mediation thing that we are required to come up with. A policy.
I would look at some, okay. So. There is one through A L I, there's one through the American Bar Association. And there's one through the National Service Animal Registry also. Information on that. Can the public talk at all while you're having a discussion?
Yeah, yes. You're like the person. Yes, absolutely. So, um, so I have done some more looking at it also. As far as the investigation goes, I think there's been some confusion, I don't, there's not any monetary. They are not a mon, like, they are not a finding organization, the opposite's all right. So to go to investigation is not, if we were to fail the investigation, we would not be fined. So there's not that part. Um, I've been looking at the ADA. Um, the two, two main things that stuck out to me are. Reasonable accommodations. To be made. Um, we, we have not denied services, services have not been denied. Um, well, let me go back a little bit, so, I am, I'm looking at the cat now from people that come in and make comments. Or comments that we, we've received in person, not necessarily via email or letters, but people coming in. Um, is I. Is Sylvia is a resource in our library at this point, and with everything that has gone on. With a variety of resources in our library. Um, my concern is. The procedure that was not followed through the process. Um. Under the ADA, it's about reasonable accommodations without undue burden. We. Um, may have, we have made a variety of accommodations. Um, that would, that would fall into that. Plus. I want to make sure I say it the right way. Um. There's been some discussion about medical records. Um, and so underneath. I looked up requesting a reasonable accommodation under the ADA. Um. What is a disability, under current law, ADA Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, a disability is defined as a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits a major life. Activity. And then what does it mean to be a quote qualified individual with a disability? And so it, it talks about that, and actually there are. Requirements of medical documentation.
Into disability.
If it's an, if it's an actual disability, so we are going to look at it under the lens of, are we meeting ADA? Are we meeting ADA? Um. That then becomes a different procedure than what has been followed. Um. So. What is it meant by sufficient medical? Documentation, there are some different things under that. Um. If someone does not, if someone provides insufficient documentation. Employer or business does not have to provide reasonable accommodation until sufficient documentation is provided. Um. And then if a person is asking, like, do they just get whatever they want? Like, it literally says entitled to anything that he or she wants. No. I'm only entitled to an effective accommodation and not the accommodation of choice. If there are two possible reasonable accommodations and one costs more or is more burdensome than the other, the employer may choose the less expensive or burdens, burdensome accommodation as long as it is effective. Um, and one is easier to provide. Um, one of the concerns that was brought forward was, um, programming and the ability to attend programming. Which I have offered to, to close that room up, that's where all of our adult programming happens. Um. To have that room be. An allergen free space, so the cat would not be in there. Um. So, under the umbrella of reasonable. Accommodation, that way, we have had a variety of people, we have had people come in and say that they are on the spectrum, on the autism spectrum. And that having the cat here. Creates a space that they can then come into versus a space that they're not comfortable, um, coming into. Everyone who does come, and I under, I, I'm. Everyone who has come in has expressed. Support. Um. And that she is a, a very. Just a very big part of the whole experience. Um, and so. I would like the board to consider it. Not as an animal, so much as a resource. Um, because my fear as a director. And librarian is that. If we're not gonna follow the procedure. Then what is gonna happen the next time someone comes in? With a, another complaint like this, and I understand, I mean, we've talked about this, that we're not talking about other things right now. Um. But looking forward. With that. That, so that's my. That's my understanding, even with some paperwork that was provided anonymously. Not really sure. Where it came from. Um, I mean. In most cases, everyone works together, this is under the ADA, this was, but like I said. This is under allergies on the ADA, in most cases, everyone works together to improve conditions and promote equal access. And include those with disabilities, this is called an accommodation. Um. An organization must make a good faith effort to find. And make acceptable changes, creative thinking and flexibility, these are all, all things that we've. We've done, we've not withheld services, we've not. Um. I. No, no. I just. We've done our due diligence, we've done our. Accommodations.
I'd like to, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but if I remember the agreement. About, that we're talking about, it locks us into a financial. Expense of putting an air filtration system in.
Yes.
That would express that it would probably be good anyways. To have something like that for the cotton trees.
But I don't know if we have it budgeted, and it worries me that based on a complaint from one patron. We're. Spending, or we're possibly installing a quite expensive system. Without a known outcome, if that makes sense, I think if we want an air filtration system, that's great, but we should budget for it.
Would be under our facility plant compliance, I hope that we're gonna look at. I think we need to go out. But, like, think of it from multiple, like, not just one person's perspective, but. There's allergy, like, there's as many allergies as there are people, so I think from a, think of it from all community members standpoint. Um, to have. A cat that does have. Dander. In a public place. That isn't a private business. I just, I don't necessarily want to look at it just from one perspective, I want to. Think about all community members that may, don't, that maybe aren't coming to the table, they just don't come because they can't. Because of the cat.
Well, I think that dander in the library, due to materials coming in and out, isn't that the way? Allergies work, like, the animal doesn't have to be present, it's the dander?
I mean, from, and this is just me, but if I, if I was to touch Sylvia, I couldn't run this meeting.
But you haven't had that experience, um, just for the.
But, yeah, I, but I don't believe her.
So one of the.
Are you allergic?
Yeah. Oh, so one of the things too is, you know, we do an excellent job of cleaning the books when they go, come in. But the books that are in here are not cleaned before they go out to the patrons. After we've had cat in the locker.
We only clean it outside though.
I mean, I know, I know you do, but, but there's still. There, it's the reverse of it. Of the fact of the hair that's in the library from the cat that's going out with the book, not the other way around.
My understanding is an allergy is not covered in the ADA. Americans with Disabilities Act, allergies are not disabilities. That's my understanding. But is that what you just said, that it is, or? This is a part.
Well, that there has to be. Because there was discussion with HIPAA that we couldn't, that there's no requirement for. Uh, medical.
We can't ask.
But, no, but, but if, if, if the person is requesting accommodations under the ADA. They then have to.
Supply.
Supply. So, have you asked her? To supply, you have been saying that we can't.
Well, that's because that's what HIPAA says. Now, I don't know.
If we just, if you just asked?
It's, one of my things says consult with a legal counsel. And the disability rights organization ensure that this is how it should be followed.
We have had a lawyer reach out to offer to do that work, but I don't know if you would like me to explore that.
I'm, so, but. So you're saying that. Having this. Working with the, um. U S Department of Education Office is its civil rights. This is the fun.
No, I said if it goes to full investigation, is my understanding that there is not a monetary fine at the end. There was some concern that there would be a fine, and my understanding is not.
No fine.
There is an, and there's an investigation to see if we are. Following, or if we are not following.
And they're only going to investigate. The cat.
The cat.
That's not doorways or stairways or.
It's not full, like, are you in compliance with every ADA? And if there is.
I do think so, we, I know the cost I have. To put in two air purifiers. And I actually have three, I have two standing and I have one on my furnace, which is quite a lot. And this is a large library.
Well, and that's part of what we talked about last month, was the fact that, like, we need to. Look at that as a whole separate thing anyway. Right, right, right. And the air purification in here, if I remember right, is just, would be. For the office, because if you sign this, the cat stays in the office. But that's only if we sign that.
Is that correct?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, let's hear it.
I think. If they apply for an ADA exception or exception that, like you said, has to have certain proof and everything. But I also think you need to remember. You're a government owned public facility and you have to take in account all of the people. All of the public, and if you make a decision based on one person. Then you're setting a precedent that somebody else could challenge with litigation. The list of allergies goes on and on and on, and so where do you stop? You have to. This is a public facility and that means everybody. Not accommodating. Just like any medical condition, if it meets the standards of the ADA, then that might be a different topic, but. You have to represent everybody in everything that you do. And. Personal opinions. Don't have a place in public facilities. Because you're one opinion. If you make a decision on that one opinion, then you are, you might be offending the rest of the public. If. If you're allergic to shrimp and you go into a restaurant, you can't expect them to. Stop serving shrimp. You don't eat it. You have, the allergies are personal and you have to take care of yourself, that's your responsibility. Unless you need the strict guidelines of the ADA to the letter. Because otherwise, you're, you're taking action based on a personal issue of one person. And. That has a ripple effect on the total public. Because the next person that comes in is allergic to dust. You have, you have signs up so that people know that if. That there is a cat in the building, if you are definitely allergic to a cat, you don't go in. That's your personal issue, it isn't the public issue. And you represent the public, and I think that that has to be. You have to remember that when you're doing any of your deliberation. What, be careful of what precedent you're setting because. There's a whole lot of public. And. Anyway.
Thank you. One of your. Um, comments.
Thank you.
Her questions was, um, people might not be able to come to the table because of the cat, we have also not received any written or phone call. Like, nobody has called and said, you know, I really wanted to come to this program, but I couldn't come. Because, because of the cat, I'm not saying that, that people would.
Right, I mean, a lot of people like to keep certain things private.
Right, but I'm just saying that is not.
But, right, and if it's not, and so it's not made aware.
I mean, I completely agree, it needs to be for all of the public, and I think that. When you are thinking of all of the public, you're thinking of community members, not just one, but all of them. That possibly can't, like, I, I just, I, I, I agree with you because I'm thinking of all of the public.
But a possibility of something is different than a.
And when you go into, like. I don't know, I just feel like the library is different than a restaurant. Um, on multiple different levels.
Yeah.
Um, because we need to be for all of the public, that restaurant doesn't need to be for all of the public, we need to be for all of them.
Yeah, and same with I have, which is on.
But accommodating one individual.
But I don't think it's just accommodating one individual, in this case it is.
If you haven't had, how long has the cat been a resident in your facility?
Three. So, I did have two. That, that were, one, they asked. If there's monies that go towards the cat's food or.
Which I figured, I'm gonna brought that up. It's all donation.
Oh, okay, okay, and the other one was, um, what kind two?
I just feel like there's so many. Opinion. Well, there's always gonna be a fantastic.
Was, somebody said I, they would be, they would want to see the cat go to the Dedman Foundation. Like, maybe once a month or something, and those kids be able to go there.
Like a program there?
Like a program and read to the cats, that's what it was. I really forgot.
Um, Judy, hold on one second, I've got a hand here too, go ahead.
So, this does not fall under HIPAA, worked in a hospital for thirty years, it does not fall under HIPAA because she publicly announced she had allergies. So she announced I had.
But, but. But with HIPAA, but can I pass four?
I'll, I'll get to that, it's, it does not follow under HIPAA, there's plenty of grants for filter, air, air filters through federal grants. Uh. The. There's not money that's gonna be involved, but if it is, the county is insured for stuff like this, and then if it does need to be, I'm a federal lawyer. Step in and go care for you. So Janet, what was your question?
Oh. Um, my question was that we can't ask for that. We can't, under the HIPAA, we cannot ask.
Well, she, she announced it.
Yeah, I know she announced it, but there was somebody that, I, I just specified that was somebody that asked. Yeah, I know she announced it, but there was somebody that, I, I just specified that was somebody that asked for the written-
Right, but because if she says she's ADA, and if she filled out paperwork saying she had a disability for it, then she has to prove it.
She's confusing to me, because we want them to come forward, but they come forward, they're not covered.
Well, if they're gonna say that they have ADA, and they're gonna go after you, if that's what you're afraid of, they have to prove, the warrant, proof is on it, and then if she checked the mark that says she has a disability, then she needs to prove that that's the disability in terms of whatever she's lawyer, or whatever she's gonna do.
In one of her emails, she said she would get new medical proof.
That wasn't an email?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
And that, um-
So, I'm, or you're, sorry.
I know, I'm through.
All right. Judy wants to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Judy Ursula. I just, I wanted to comment, um, just based on what I've been hearing. Um, I agree with Dani. I think that maybe housing the cat somewhere else would be best for the general public, even though it seems as though it's uh, only on request of one person. That's just the one person that brought awareness to it. A lot of people typically have allergies to cats. But aside from that, I was gonna say, I've been to so many different libraries throughout different counties, states, even internationally. I've gone into different, um, libraries all throughout, um, Europe, even in Mexico. Never have I come across a library that has a pet. Um, because the main draw to the library is the books, the, the, uh, you know, the education part of it, the, um, leisure, the entertainment of the books, that's, that's the draw. And even though it is a sweet idea of having the cat for people with disabilities, I can say that in Big Sandy, we have a lot of kids that have disabilities, and they feel fully welcome, and that's by the staff. The staff just come in and, you know, they know their name, they do back-forward, you know, conversation, and I think that maybe, maybe talking to the parents or people that work with these kids with special needs, you can learn to know what their interests are, and you can easily redirect them to the interest that they like, whether it's cars, or dinosaurs, or whatever it may be. So, I, I do understand your point, Emily, with that, it is, it would be really nice, you know, to have that, but at the same time, you're accommodating the small percentage, whereas the, you know, the, the main public, it's, there's a lot of people, and maybe they're just too scared to come forward. And I, again, I, with Janet, she makes a great point. Asking for medical records that goes against HIPAA. You can't just say, I need to see your, your medical records to make sure you really have this allergy. I mean, I don't think people would lie about that, so that's just um, what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
One of the things I looked up, it was called the Point to the Library Bill Rights. This document endorsed by AAL emphasizes the library's commitment to providing equal access to resources and services for all without any discrimination. And the focus on neutrality says libraries as public institutions are funded by tax dollars and must remain neutral regarding such issues. Otherwise, it will appear that they're favoring some of others over
So does that mean, would you be favoring the complainant?
We'd be favoring people with allergies by trying to give us space that all are welcome.
So we're not maintaining neutral.
Can we get a hair with cut? I'm just throwing it out there. Was that from the ALA? Janet, was that you said?
Um, this was, this was, it was from, this point to the Library Bill Rights was from ALA.
Oh, okay.
Which emphasized the library's commitment.
Would you read it again?
To serve all patrons. Point to the Library Bill Rights. This document endorsed by the AAL emphasizes the library's commitment to provide equal access to resources and services for all without discrimination. And the other one says focus on neutrality. Libraries as public institutions funded by tax dollars must remain neutral regarding such issues.
Thank you.
So, let's focus, like, what does it mean to be neutral? So, I mean, what does it mean to be neutral? Does it mean? Because I love the idea that the kids love the cat. I, I-
It's not, it's not just the kids, that's, I'm kind of taking offense. Um, to what you said, like, it's not, she's not a gimmick, and she's not just for children. That's not, she helps adults too.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, that's, we had a patron in yesterday who I believe was showing her cat videos on their laptop. We have a lot of older people that, I mean, I mean, the kids that come in like her, I'm not saying that they don't, but it's not like, we don't have kids coming in just to see her, that's not. But you have older people that are interested in that.
Yeah, we do.
And it's not discrimination if you're making accommodations.
Right, and that's reason, that's reasonable accommodations is what it really has driven, and like I said, that's from my perspective right now, it's more from the resource proper procedure part of it. That we're doing due diligence and to provide services.
What if we have permit requirements for you diligence? And oh, now I lost what I was gonna say. And we're just not on board with just switching up the programming for the cat, like, having the cat, and I know Marian had said before that she doesn't travel well, but she also didn't like the building when she first came. Could she get used to that? Like, is that something that we can work towards? Like, obviously, no, a cat doesn't like to travel, because normally going to the vet.
Yes.
But if this was like, um, once a month type of thing, could she get used to it?
I mean, I think from our, from our perspective, from my perspective, that's directed, let's say it's all on me, is that like, we are making accommodations with her as a resource in the library.
You're making, say that again, please.
We are making accommodations
For her.
For people to be able to have her as a resource that is in the library, like a dictionary or a computer. Within the people that, I mean, it's a little different than a dictionary or a computer, because you don't have an allergy to a computer, right? So, I know, but that's where the reasonable accommodation-
Accommodation.
To technology in general.
The reasonable accommodation piece comes in.
That's what the ADA asks for, is reasonable accommodation.
Right, which, which we're just saying.
Okay, so I guess to put it that way, so, it's, sorry, it just came to me. So, no, I don't find it would be a reasonable accommodation to travel her, like, I don't. That would be undue burden.
Well, are you gonna make a special trip and bring your kids to go to the Dedman, to, to get animals there?
I mean, I think that would be a really cool program to be on a trip with her back to them. No, she would be at someone's house, but I think, I think that would be a really cool program to go, and don't they have a room there that you can sit with the cat?
But there are, there are already cats there, you could, ones that are there.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, no. Sylvia would go to somebody.
No, 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 I never meant, I meant to let the children go to those.
Yeah. Um, no, it wasn't, no, it was trying to accommodate both bi-neutral, going back to bi-neutral. So, um, so that's, but that's, so, but, yeah, that's my, like, we have made reasonable accommodations, like I said, to, to make sure that programming can happen. We now have Zoom options, we have, we do some kids' programming outside. Um, all of those things fall under that piece that is under the ADA. The ADA says you have to, you have to make, in good faith, reasonable accommodations. And that is what we have done with her being in the library. So we are following the law of the ADA. That's what I'm saying.
I like having to.
You feel like that's enough, and that patrons are still coming in?
We have not seen a huge difference in our-
People with severe allergies can experience significant discomfort.
I'm not arguing that. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that's, I'm not-
It just says their well-being should be considered.
Right, and then-
I found this on the web.
That is what, I mean, that, but that is what I'm, I'm not trying to put down her level of, like, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if you look at the ADA and read through what the law states and what all of that says, we are, like, that's what I think an investigation would show.
It says in some areas, laws may exist regarding service animals and allergies in public places. Where it's crucial for libraries to comply with the relevant regulations.
Right.
And libraries should explore alternate ways to create a welcoming-
Which we are to have also that.
Pictures, therapy dogs, or designated relaxation areas, while ensuring inclusivity for all mutants.
She doesn't, she's a therapy cat.
She doesn't have any accidents or do anything, but cats do. No, and actually, we were just talking, somebody made a comment, um, like, my cats that I have I have in Idaho, they, we stop getting cat toys because they destroy all paper and cardboard, or if there's any food left out, they begin to act. And she doesn't scratch, she's very sure she doesn't, she doesn't do any of those things, like, she is really one, like, like, she's a weird cat, like, she's a rare cat. There, she doesn't, um, no, there is not any, any of that. Um, she doesn't swipe at people, like, if you really get in and wrestle with her, she does what cats do, but she just doesn't randomly walk up to people and scratch them.
Have we ever had one?
I actually don't know.
That too, I see.
Right.
Mice.
I don't know if there ever has been a.
I don't, I don't know either. But I'd like the idea of the cat, because I she won't eat the box all the videos we've been trying to turn her to.
She should be eating that.
But I haven't heard anyone mention the undue stress of moving the cat.
For the cat?
Uh huh.
Oh, I think, I mean, she adapted to this place. I mean, eventually, she, I'd like, I, you move, you're here, so you probably-
You're assuming.
Well- I don't know, I just, I feel that we are meeting the, I think I gotta put patrons before.
I do.
I mean, I, I have to think of the whole community before that.
How long has the cat been a resident?
Three years.
Two years.
I don't know.
I never did get an answer.
I think it's three years.
Three years, and how many complaints have you gotten? Then, that is a, seems to be a minority of the community. If other people had an issue that they felt was keeping them from coming into the library or utilizing the library services, they would have voiced it by now.
Maybe, I mean, we don't know.
Well, but you can't make decisions on negatives, and, and on assumptions. Your fact is-
We have one.
She's been here three years. People know she's here before they come in, and they still choose to come in. If they didn't choose to come in for that reason, they would make a statement and say, I really wanna come into the library, but I can't because you have a cat.
Thank you.
I agree with Emily, you have to meet the law under the ADA, which says reasonable accommodations. Getting rid of something isn't reasonable, that's pretty drastic. You've offered reasonable accommodations, and she, she has to meet the re, the requirements of the ADA first, before it's even an issue. If she doesn't meet the conditions, then you don't even have an issue.
Thank you.
You've heard my story about my little niece, my little great niece, how did you? Two years ago, she and her siblings and her mom come to the library when they come to Fort Benton, and they come for about a month in the summer. And, um, Addie is ADD, she has some issues, and she would not read. She was ten years old. Maybe not, maybe she was eight years old, and she would not read, came to the library, and there was Gavia, and she liked the cat, and one of the girls said, oh, we have some cat books. And they brought her some cat books. She started to read, and now she's an excellent reader. But she did not read until she made acquaintance with that cat in the library, and they brought her some cat books.
And the, and the person who suggested it, like, it wasn't, I don't know who it was, it wasn't me.
I don't either.
Said, like, identified, as Judy said, like, it wasn't just the, you know, part of it was the presence of the cat, but part of it was being responsive to the region. Um, but, yeah.
What harm would come out of, other than, let's say, that, to have it been investigated? Have somebody come in and check? And then if, if they say you have to get rid of the cat, that's when I would make a decision, but there's no harm.
It hasn't been cool explained to me, so I don't know. I mean, it's nice to know that there's no fine, because that was my main thing. I don't wanna spend county money, I'm responsible for the county money, and I don't wanna pool of county money.
It is my understanding that the investigation will show that we are either
Compliant.
In compliance, or we are not compliant.
So can you just wait until she gets that for sure, and then have, have somebody come in, and if they say the cat's got to go?
Do they ever send us anything, what a full investigation?
I can, I know, I can reach out to them.
I mean, we need to do something, though.
Because I think that first will get you or everybody's net.
All community members are why I'm on this board.
And ours.
Are what?
Is why I'm on this board, is for all community members.
And then that we even, um, can-
Or pray, most likely.
Fifteen minutes.
All right, ladies.
Who's the vote today?
I mean, if we don't, if we don't do anything, it'll, if we choose not to sign this, my understanding is it will go into full investigation, because they've given us already, because we're, they've given us thirty extra days.
Well, it wasn't just thirty, it was just the, the understanding that it is going to take longer than their own.
Right.
So it wasn't necessarily that we had to do it.
But she's lost email, made a film like.
So here I wrote in.
Wait, 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 oh, sorry, go ahead.
He doesn't necessarily mean-
It wasn't, it wasn't just thirty more days. It was the understanding, which the complainant did agree to, with that understanding, but it was-
So we didn't need to update him?
So I can call him.
And maybe get that?
Yes. It's not that we're not putting on it. I mean, we are, like, it's, there's research, there's all-
It says here ADA definition of the disability. No, the American's with, does not require individuals with cat allergies to provide documentation of their allergy when seeking access to public spaces like libraries. The ADA defines a disability as a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activity. Cat allergies can be considered a disability under ADA. If it significantly impacts an individual ability to participate. So here it says it does not require documentation, and it does define it as a disability.
So that just is different, when, when you just sit down, because I found it.
Yeah, it does say it is a disability.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it is a disability. Yeah, it is a disability. Well, there's, they have two definitions and one of them said.
So I can read out to him and find out.
I would like not to say it now.
I just don't want to go through three more meetings where we sit here and go.
I don't think you'll believe me.
Yeah.
It's a big, it's a big smile.
Everyone has their own theme.
Hi.
Table it.
Let's table it.
I don't know, you're the chairman. I mean, I guess you guys need to understand if we table it and they decide not to give us any more time, but. Then what happens? It goes to investigation.
I, I just.
I don't think the investigation is going to be a bad thing.
I would like to know what it entails. I don't know if it's gonna be better bad. Right, I, I, so I don't, I don't know.
It's just.
I mean, the no blind thing sounds.
The ADA does say allergies is a disability.
Yeah, yes, Jen, we're not, we're not, I'm not arguing that.
Oh, okay.
We're talking about.
So is that a good thing for?
I, I don't know.
We're gonna find out. We will to email. Can you get it?
Probably not.
We're on, we're gonna copy the last part, or like I said, it to myself.
New business, um, so. The federations got, okay, I will just read them down. Good afternoon, a couple of weeks ago, I sent an email about our options for the additional four thousand dollars in funding the state library commission voted to give each. Federation for trustee training and C E opportunities. Um, I only got, or this is not me, this is from Val. I only got a response from nine libraries. The majority responding felt that the training in Haver was the way to go with remaining funding being divided amongst the libraries. Therefore, one thousand two hundred forty-five dollars will be used to pay for the training with Dan Clark, who's a lawyer, right?
No.
No.
The head of the local government.
Local government center, thank you.
Yep.
And each library will receive a check for one hundred eighty-five dollars. Those checks were mailed today.
I don't think I have that on, this direct about then, okay, thank you.
I was worried more about another part. The Haver training is tentatively scheduled for May twenty-first from one to five. I will let everyone know when I have a definite date and time. Please remember, this funding is specifically earmarked. For training for your library's trustees and cannot be used for any other purpose. You may choose. To use the funds to pay for another training for your trustees or pay for them to travel to Haver, to the Haver training, M L A. Or some other training, but it cannot be used for persons not on your library board. Going forward, this will be considered ongoing fund, so will include it in future plans of service. It can be used for retreats or other training for trustees. Please be thinking about how our federation can best utilize these funds going forward. This will be discussed at our meeting May second. It would be great to have ideas to discuss so we can decide how we want to use it in the next fiscal year. So she, Val recommended that I share that whole thing with everyone. So. Um. And that, and then is that what the training is, the library board training with the M S U local government center?
Yeah, so the one in Haver, and it is actually going to happen on May term first. Check with. And pretty, it's set in stones, but I guess we didn't, I found out that that's confirmed.
Yeah, um, so keep in mind that it's, it's a hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Oh, to go to it.
Well, like, that's the, no, 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 it's free to go.
It's free to do.
But like, if you're working right, your card, yes, then we could reimburse.
Is this on Zoom?
I have no idea.
No, my dance wouldn't, I don't know if you've ever taken a train from Dan Clark. He's fantastic. He's a lot of fun, but. And he's not zoomed, like, it's got, you gotta get there.
So.
It's one day.
It's one to five.
One to five, one to five.
Is it similar to the one we think you went?
I think it should include lunch and maybe.
Separate?
No, it is, and it's not. So Ashley did the one here, right?
Right, oh, okay.
So Ashley is very much more like organized and Dan is this awesome, like, what's bothering you? And then he talks about it and weaves in open meeting law and stuff like that, and. One of us from the state library has asked for one of us to be there in case people ask very specific library lectures, so we can. Kind of come in and chat about it.
And we have to sign up, right? Because it did have.
Need to know numbers.
Yes.
Well, I already signed up then.
Awesome.
So, yeah, it's not just for the Pathfinder run. It's not just for Pathfinder, it can be for any of our trustees.
I don't know if I signed up, I'll check.
I signed up for that.
Did it on the calendar, yeah.
Yeah, because there was a form in there.
Yes, but I don't know.
You can probably check.
Check, yeah, I have to check. We'll do that.
Believe it or not.
It sounds like it would be.
Going. So, it's like, would you, you want to register?
No, if they have already registered, like, if no one's not sure if she's registered.
Oh, we're, oh, we're not. Actually, I can probably look.
Okay, I just don't think I filled up the other page. I don't think I did. I saw it, I read it.
Thank you. So, cool. That's about their business. For my, for me.
Right, public comment items not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. The, the other comments that I have. Dealt with, um. Reminding the public that. Their opinions are personal to them and that they. If they want them considered by a public institution like the library, they need to go through the channels that you guys have. Set up and that. Decisions have to be made on the whole public and not on a group of people. Or whatever those opinions based on. Tradition, family beliefs, personal beliefs, um, religions are personal and. You can't make publicly, make decisions based on personal because that doesn't include the whole public. And you want to, I feel you want to be careful in setting a precedent. On any opinions. Um. The issue with where the books are and how they're displayed, that's a personal opinion of somebody that has an issue with it. But it doesn't represent the public opinion and so. You don't have to make a decision based on a personal opinion. That you represent the total public. And if you make a lot of decisions based on a few public comments. It really sets a precedent for the whole situation and with. The cat, I think you have to also think. Of it as a principle and maybe a challenge to a principle as opposed to, um. A personal issue which an allergy is. And that's.
So are you talking about materials? Like, you're talking about like book challenges, material challenges?
Right, and, and when they, when the, somebody wants to tell you where to put the books or how to label them. Or how high they have to be, those are personal opinions and. You can consider suggestions and everything on the type of books to order or whatever, but. You don't have to make a decision based on. My personal opinion. It's up to me to monitor and navigate my opinions. If I don't like something, then it's up to me to avoid it. It's not up to you to accommodate me by removing something from your library or putting it. Higher than I can reach, which is very high.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I had a few other comments.
Oh, we would love to.
Want to read them.
Yeah, we would love to read them if you want to turn them into us. That sounds lovely. Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I did bring some beneficial for the person with the cat. If, if, you never know if it would help or not.
Do you want beneficial on here?
I don't, no, we should be giving out drugs. Just a thought.
So, Sissy felt a, again, so, uh. I want to bring up labeling certain books and books or cover all of, or whatever, I just. These times made me stop the villages, uh, made me think about history. And eighteen hundreds where Protestants couldn't even read the Bible. They couldn't. They had to sneak around, they have killed, they got just persecuted and killed. I don't want people that have a lifestyle that people don't agree with. That have to live with being scared about anything. God loves all of us, so.
Thank you, second point. Thank you. All right, anything else?
All right, next meeting will be at noon, Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-two, four, in Fort Benton. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
Yeah, I'm second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
Voting carries. We need to, more research, we're going to conflicting.
They are.
Yeah.
That's when they switch over.
Asma and allergies.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that.
Hopefully, somebody's getting my.